This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 8th, 2025, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. By exit or to my right and left of council chambers. Aaron, can you please lead us in the process of leaving?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call.
Mayor Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember George.
Here.
Councilmember Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Council President Kintrowa.
Here.
Councilmember Postoni.
Here.
Councilmember Vargas.
Here.
Borough Attorney Manon.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hugler.
Here.
Okay. Tonight on our discussion item, we're going to start off with 308 Raritan Avenue redevelopment. Terry?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So I have been working with the owner of 308 Raritan Avenue, along with our planner, Chris. The purchaser, I guess she purchased the building probably a year ago, or maybe they give or take. And I know we've discussed it at various iterations, but they've gotten the project to a point where we are recommending as a staff that we consider a conditional developer designation, which would allow us to establish an escrow account and agreement so that we can further vet this concept out, inclusive of whether or not a financial agreement makes sense based on the project. Just to kind of summarize, just for everybody, it's 308 Raritan, which is the vacant property in between El Sol and the Gold Mine Barber Shop, just to kind of orient you. It's the project that's being proposed is mixed use, meaning there's retail on the ground level and apartments upstairs, about 28,000 square feet, inclusive of the driveway access that they have proposed. Eighteen residential units and with three of them being affordable in accordance with our ordinance. The commercial space is approximately, as currently kind of sketched out, 1,200 square feet of commercial on the ground level. I should mention, the owner, at least as the last time I talked with her, is a pharmacist and her proposal is to move her business into the building, at least as of the last time we spoke about it. And I know that's an important issue in our current climate. There is a kind of a creative parking solution in that what's been proposed is a kind of a self-parking mechanism. That's another thing we want to do a little more due diligence on to see how that would work. And probably the most ambitious element of the project that she's proposed is that it would be a 3D printed building, which would be, as far as we know, the first of its kind in terms of the commercial development in New Jersey of this nature, which is highly ambitious, as well as utilizing a lot of kind of green design, kind of advanced green design technologies, how I would put it. And so basically, this, what I'm asking council to consider, hopefully at their next meeting, your next meeting on the 24th, is a resolution that will basically authorize an agreement that would designate the owner of 308 Raritan, which is unfortunately titled United Estate Family Holding LLC, very not hard, easy to understand what that is. The conditional developer designation, it would, it has that same kind of timeframe like we had with, you know, six months kind of to do our due diligence, so that both parties act kind of in good faith to explore whether or not the project's viable, answer questions about the project's expense performance, things like that, as well as any other questions we might have, you know, for her professionals. But I will say, the owner has put in a lot of energy into the project so far. They did post us, I mentioned an escrow agreement, but we have been charging escrows for our planner's time, but we're going to need more. And really, we should, we should formalize that agreement now. We don't want to, you know, she needs to have some assurance that we're giving it fair consideration at this point. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. And I'm, you know, happy to, and I know we've discussed this in various formats prior, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to field them.
Just to say, the Economic Development Committee talked about this. Think that we, we think it's a good idea to sort of move the ball forward a little bit, whereas, you know, there's still, it's a, it's a fun, interesting, new, different kind of project. But that means that there is some really high upside, but there's also, we got to make sure we're doing things the right way. And so I think this is a process of conditional development, is that we sort of both get to vet this out for a little bit more before anything else goes forward. So I think that was, that was our thought. Is that a fair summary of what we talked about?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, you were excited by the green design elements. Curious about the 3D printing construction. I guess we would have to, we would want all the assurance that it will be sound in construction. And I don't know if construction could possibly caught up to it.
That is a big question that we will have for, she has brought on somebody who's got some experience with 3D printing. And, you know, some of that risk is on her, you know, to make sure it passes muster with our code officials and the state. We're going to need, we've voiced that concern many times, you know, we don't have that, I mean, nobody has that experience, frankly. I mean, there are some examples of 3D printed homes, but they're kind of like off-site printed and then.
Constructed.
But I'm sure we're going to have a wealth of questions around that, the parking system and otherwise. But this at least gives us kind of a little more structured format to have that conversation.
And just to Matt's point, I think we're just very excited about the prospect of that, like, kind of defunct property being revitalized and put in, you know, what sounds like a very promising use, so.
And what I should say is, based on our recent, last time we looked at the plans, they generally conform to the 2005 redevelopment plan parameters with, with some of these kind of new design techniques included. So we've done enough vetting of the project to know it kind of passes that first cut, but now we got to kind of slice in. But, you know, she's eager, would be nice to see that project move forward in some fashion just because that property has been in bad condition for such a long time. And, and I, you know, so, yeah.
Matt?
Where did we leave this when we talked about this last? Because I think that we had some concern, I had some concerns about redevelopment area pilot. I mean, like, so what is the, what, can you remind us what the purpose of design?
So this will basically does not commit us to the project or any financial agreement. But what this will allow, and what we had discussed previously, was we needed them to post the escrows so that we could have our professionals evaluate the numbers and evaluate if a financial agreement made sense or pilot made sense, as well as the other aspects of the project. This gives them some, a little more protection that we're doing this in good faith to try to see if we can figure it out. But it's very clear in the agreement and in the reso that this doesn't mean your project is, that is 100% not, not what this is. But this basically carves out the space that, you know, you're going to post these escrows, you're going to keep them replenished and then until we get to a point where it's either a thumbs up or a thumbs down and, and we'll move forward.
But they're going to be thinking that a pilot is.
That's the request, the request was that they would like, they, they're arguing it would be a modest amount, not a huge one, to make the project work. And they're willing to throw in some additional benefits to the municipality, which I'm not prepared to present right now. But that's the conversation that having this designation and these funds will allow us to have and bring back to the council.
Did they hear our feedback about the kind of ambitious nature of the project?
Yes, 100%.
And that, that ambition is what necessitates a pilot potentially?
Yes.
Other than, instead of a normal building, for example?
This is really cool, though.
I'm sure it's really cool.
I've been watching them in Switzerland and there's a thing in Nevada. Yeah, but they're like, they're really.
No, it's been relayed prior to councils from myself and staff. But I'm, I feel that they've done enough due diligence and put enough specifics together that we can make a reasonable evaluation. And, and just to remind everybody, in a redevelopment agreement, we can include timelines and things. So if the project can't get off the ground, you know, there can be contingencies for that as well, so that this property doesn't fall in under its own weight, you know, an ambition. So there are ways we can structure that, should we decide to move forward.
Maybe they can build one more affordable unit. And it's, as Terry said, they have, actually, when, when they first brought it to us, we were a little nervous and they've done some serious work to get it to this stage, right? Like they, I think they heard us, I think they heard some of the things that we, we said to them and have made some real effort to sort of get us to this point. So they, they put in some work, so I think it's. And what did they do? Well, they, they, they just came back with, with some, some more concrete foot on the, or bone, or meat on the bones, I guess, of the plant. It was just sort of, at the beginning, my memory of it is that it was, let's have a 3D building and we're going to, you know, and I'm going to build it because I saw it on YouTube. And, and I think they've done a lot of that, so.
I think it was just ideas, right? No professionals and stuff.
Yeah, the good thing on the redevelopment plan from our side is we can, we can ask them for these details, you know, to put more flesh on, on the bones of the proposal. We can actually ask them and they pay for us to look at it.
Yeah. Is there any issue with if the developer is also the retail operator? Is that, is there any issue there with the pilot or any?
I don't think so. I mean, if anything, because I would argue it's an owner occupied building, that makes the financials work better, meaning less reliant on a pilot or, you know, bigger, because they're going to benefit from their own buildings. So that's, you know, it's just kind of like if you own a two-family and you live in one of the units, you're benefiting from it. So I think that probably helps the financials of the project because that's money she would have otherwise been paying rent to somebody else she can kind of put into her own project. So, so there, there's a lot of, you know, it is ambitious, but it's encouraging. And I know we've been talking about wanting to see smaller projects, more infill type stuff happen, not just our larger track A, H, X, E kind of projects. So this kind of fits that bill in.
And I like it because it's women and minority owned. So those are really good components that, that it's, that she's bringing to the table.
What would be the difference between, like, say, for example, the former Safe Drugs, you know, which is how, which has the building issues? You know, what would be the difference between others, other smaller projects coming in and saying, hey, I want a pilot too?
I mean, right now, the main difference is this is in a redevelopment area. It's in the 2005 designated area. So, you know, it is to some extent on the table for properties that are conforming to the 2005 or our more recent 2019, 2020, whenever we updated it, 2024, tract A to C, D. So it's not even on the table in areas where we've relied on, for example, on the most recent one, 810 North Second was a small redevelopment plan, but it was using the rehab statute to adopt the plan, which doesn't include long-term financial agreements as a threat. So that's one criteria. And certainly, if you guys are going to, you know, consider that here, we can have that conversation about, well, what are, what do we, you know, what kind of parameters are we comfortable with? You know, community benefits, environmental benefits, things like that. Obviously, the affordability, we're always looking to encourage that as well. So, but the main difference between them and any other property is the, the 2005 redevelopment, at least puts it on the table.
I don't know if I have a good handle over this, over this proposal, but I'd be willing to support it right now. But I, I, it's, I don't really understand the financials or the.
Neither do we, that's why, that's why we need, we don't have the financial information. That's what this will be kind of jumping us into. And what I can share with everybody is the draft agreement and resolution that the attorneys have put together. So you get a better handle on what the council at the next meeting is going to be, you know, asked to do, which is really just the designation and the escrow agreement. And it's very clearly not, but it acknowledges as of right now, the project looks like something like, I just read off, right out of the agreement, the parameters, looks like that. And that's, that's what we're, we're basically saying, okay, we, you know, we, you know, it seemed like there was at least a general interest enough. And we were very clear, it's not a slam dunk moving, you know, but that, you know, we are basically indicating that we are willing to give this a thought and we're not, we haven't closed the door to it.
Any further discussions? Questions? Okay, so Terry, please do send information around.
Sure thing.
So everybody can have it. So, okay, so we're going to move on.
This is going to be, I would like to request, because, you know, I believe they're ready. And, and, you know, at the 24th.
That's why I was asked if there's any other additional questions.
The reso and the agreements are ready.
Yeah, I think this is one that we'll need to.
Okay, so.
Because of the ordinance issues, we might have to adopt. We, I think we need to keep a closer eye on this one as it goes through the early stages, rather than just have it come back in six months. Because I think we're going to have to change some ordinances here.
Sure. All right, so you have more questions?
I just wondering, when, when will we be able to see the agreement?
I can forward it to you when I get back to my desk.
Okay, we'll all get a copy of the agreement.
Well, I can't, I mean, if I need to see it.
We're not voting tonight.
I know, but I mean, we're voting to allow for this to be on the agenda, right?
We're not voting.
We're not voting, we're saying we're going to add it to the agenda.
I mean, the, my request is us to consider it on the 24th.
Yes.
You would, you know, and that's, that's what I would ask the mayor to put it on the agenda. But, you know, there's nothing saying it has to be.
Okay, show of hands, who would like to see it on the agenda? Okay. I'm going to move forward with the agenda. Please send that document out so everybody can have a look at it. And, and yes, please note, it was not unanimous for, to be on the agenda, we had an extension. Okay, number two, Happa.
That's her.
I'm in. Fair enough. Yeah.
Okay, so, in, in 2001, the borough entered into a mortgage agreement with the New Jersey Housing Mortgage Financing for a series of low-income properties, about 75 units. That mortgage was a 25-year mortgage, it was $200,000. And the terms of that mortgage were it was at a 4.5% interest that compounded. But each year, the operation had to look at its revenue, see what it was able to take in from the state. This is very subsidized housing. And if they were able to make payments on the interest, they would. But if not, then that interest just continued to accrue. At the end of the 25 years, which is the end of this month, all of the principal and the accrued interest comes due. They approached us because their, their current deed restrictions and the pilot agreement that goes with those deed restrictions extends for another five years. So it goes out until 2031. So what we're putting forward is a resolution to amend the mortgage agreement to allow them to have the mortgage expire at the same time that the deed restriction, the pilot. Now, in doing that, they are, we are working on extending out that deed restriction for another 30 years. And I'm assuming the pilot would go with it. So that's effectively, we're going to do this and in exchange, they are going to extend, extend the deed restriction out and do whatever they need to do in order to make sure that those, those properties stay deed restricted. We'll take you through this, this section of the, I think, what's stage four right now. And we'll take you for another three years thereafter. The nice part with this too is that in doing so, you'll continue to earn interest. So right now, we estimate that the interest accrued was about $216,000 and then a $200,000 principal. So that $200,000 principal, that 216 will be memorialized in this and then you'll continue to earn interest in an accrued fashion that will all come due now November of 2031.
Questions? I know Matt doesn't have one, because this was your project for a while here, wasn't it?
And Happa, I mean, kind of oversight.
When you were on the Housing Authority, I remember you bringing this to me, we were discussing it.
This is great, thank you, thank you, Matt.
Yeah. All right, any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I understood correctly. So I guess, to be clear, in terms of deed restrictions that would be extending for 30 years, it's the affordability.
Yeah, so they're actually getting money toward the rental properties through the state. So this isn't just like deed, I mean, this is like truly subsidized housing, which is a wonderful thing to have in the town and it has really held a lot of folks. It's going to extend that deed restriction on those properties past 2031. And what we're working on is another 30 years thereafter. So that, that's at least a plan, otherwise, you know, and that's the only reason why we're looking to do it. The mortgage extension is just trying to make everything line up again.
Which units are we talking?
Yeah, where, for the record, where is the?
So this is, so.
Across from the Cromwell Building, that's run by Conifer. That's the building that's called a Hepburn.
I called it book numbers, page numbers, block slots. I never want to refer to the address. It's all Block 57, you know, so, so, yes, that's a better, better.
I often think it's public housing, it's the building right across the street.
Right.
So if your, if your back is to the front of the Cromwell Building, you're staring at pretty much the building we're talking about, maybe a little too.
Oh. I just wanted, because I hadn't heard anything about this before, so I just wanted to make sure.
We started the conversation early. So we're starting with the mortgage now, we're well in advance of the deed restriction kind of expiring. But because they needed to do that, we're starting the conversation that we wouldn't have had probably for another four years, we just kind of started now.
One, one thing, we, we did discuss it at finance at least once, because I knew this was coming and it was kind of convoluted sounding and maybe Aaron's helped to explain it. But it actually got a little simpler because we're basically doing step one and is we're extending five years. It doesn't, no skin off our nose to extend the mortgage, initial five years. If we can't make it work or if they can't make it work, because they've explained to us, they want to do the additional 30 years, but they've got to layer in all their subsidies. It's been, our pilot alone, should we agree to extend it another 30 years, may not be sufficient to, to run that operation as subsidized as it is. So they'll have to explain to us all those particulars. And this gives them, they basically got a few years to figure it out and we'll, we'll kind of be there along the way trying to figure it out. So, because I, I don't think we donated that land and did this so that we one day revert to market rate, you know, in five, in 2031. I will say, what, and one thing that gave me some comfort to know was if for some reason we can't make the deal work and the project does revert, there is a three-year, if you could explain that.
So, so in the current agreement, there's a three-year, there's a deed restriction. If the deed restriction expires, and I have to go through the state for these, so there's some, it's a little more complicated on their end. It has that for three years, they can't remove any of those residents. So if the residents leave over the course of three years, that's fine, then those apartments will cycle. But we'll at least have a little bit of a buffer if they decide to no longer go with the deed restriction that, that, you know, we'll be able to figure something out with these folks. But like I said, when I talk to them, they have absolutely, at least what they have relayed to me was that they're not even considering, they just want to continue the project as is. They want to extend it out, they, they like where it's at. Ironically, and I think really their point was, we did a 30-year pilot, a 30-year deed restriction and a 25-year mortgage. And they were like, why didn't we just do it for 30 years?
And everything just kind of comes together.
So just, yeah. So pretty, pretty straightforward. I would also, you know, just so you are aware, right now, the way it is, we haven't actually received any money in terms of the mortgage or the interest payment yet. And I just to kind of reiterate that, so, so it's not like we are losing revenue or any of that. It's, it's right now, the way that their agreement was done is it's only if they're turning a certain amount of profit do they make these payments or at the expiration of the mortgage. So we're, we're not changing any dynamic of where we are right now. We're just giving them a little bit more time at more interest before they finally apply as well. So it'll be one maximum.
That one, we are under some pressure to get done because, like you mentioned, their, their term expires at the end of the month. So, and we've been, they've been very good about working with us. I wouldn't want to, so I'm hoping you guys are comfortable at this point to agree to that. Because they're going to have to hustle, if you don't make it work.
So I, like a few questions, this came, so is it a fixed rate that they have or, okay?
Yeah, so, well, so it's, it's a four and a half interest, right? But, you know, everything's compounded. So, and because they're not making any of the payments, they have the compounded interest plus the principal that they know. So that's why we're estimating about $216,000 in print and interest payments and $200,000 in principal is what's currently owed. And then that will go up by another, you know, 60 months of interest. It's a pretty straightforward mortgage, which is kind of nice. So it's, it's, because we're not back, so it's a little bit easier to.
Just one follow-up question to that, so I guess, sort of what we're giving up in exchange for the extension of the affordability controls is the deed restrictions, is that we would be getting the payment for the mortgage in the near future, but we're delaying that by five years.
We are. But we're lining it up with the current deed restriction.
Right, which makes sense.
Yeah. And, and, you know, look, everyone can say this is what we want, but sometimes the economics might change it. So, you know, part of, I think their concern is they want to extend out, so it all kind of lines up. So their finances are on the same page. It allows them to now go through and try to extend the deed restriction. In the reverse is we could, you know, and the council certainly has this right, is to say, we don't want to extend the mortgage anymore, to which case the mortgage is going to come due pretty much in the next several weeks. But they may turn around and say, well, then we're not going to look to extend up the deed restriction and then we'll have to start that process. So my advice or my recommendation is, is I, I think the extension makes sense. It's, it's, at the end of the day, it's, we're going to track the, the interest, we're going to track the balloon payment, it's going to be a little bit more money to the town and it's going to secure you an all like, a good extension on the form last.
Yes. I, I would, it would be a little hard to imagine if that just all of a sudden was a.
Went away, yeah.
You know, I mean, it just, it's, it's hard to imagine. Especially, you know, we're in such a good position with all of our numbers and, you know, and, and we would also, that's like a fifth round accomplishment. Because if we get that done during the fourth round and then that's absolutely, we run right into round five, whatever that looks like, you know, in a very good position.
That's what I was going to say too, is that the, number one, it doesn't look like a project that would do a lot in an open market. Number two, it is a major cherry for fifth round, because it's going to come due when we have to start putting, the mortgage is going to be due when the restrictions come up. So we may actually be able to take credit for something that's just going to happen anyway. And the third thing is, it's really probably one of the most affordable of anything that we call affordable town. So I think we need to do it.
Yeah, the fact that this is subsidized through the state as well is, is a huge benefit to the function.
Okay.
Sounds good. Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ask them now, because Aaron's not going to be at the next meeting. We're asking in advance of his vacation.
Okay, number three, sustainable New Jersey action.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a few minutes, I wasn't intending on a full deep dive on these actions, but I did print out copies.
Matt and I are crazy about this because we love to go to the conference.
But I am going to do a take one and pass it down, yield mine. I'm going to start with the Complete and Green Streets policy. I did email this right before the meeting, so you have this digitally, not because I expected you to have read it. I did share it with Public Safety and, but we didn't get into the weeds. But I basically wanted to walk you through what this was and what the proposal is, then give you time to read it and we're going to loop back around. I am hoping we can move forward on this as a policy, not an ordinance, because frankly, for us to get, I think it'd be better to try it out as a policy. They give you two options with Sustainable Jersey policy as, by reso or policy by ordinance. But I'll give you my rationale for why. But with Sustainable Jersey, all of these actions are, we have one last chance to submit our actions in July, I think by the end of July. So for us to, if we're going to do this and we think it's pretty close and we can do it, you know, I'm going to really encourage us to try to get that on the July 1st agenda. So what I wanted to do, because it's a lot of material and I thought if I could just give everybody my preamble and then we can ask some high-level questions, but give you some time to look at it outside of the meeting and then we can, we can follow up as needed. But Peter Bilton from Safe Walking and Cycling took the Sustainable Jersey Model Resolution and Policy. And the reason I suggested, and I should mention, I met with the chairs, because a lot of this policy falls on administration. Because it's really about how do we integrate bike, ped, safety into our routine decision makings about road projects, about redevelopment projects, all of that stuff. And it creates a really good template for how to do that. It also creates some accountability mechanisms that are no work for me, like a report you do every year. But, you know, we're not doing, you know, millions of miles of road projects a year, it's, it's doable. But the reason I was suggesting we consider a resolution as opposed to the ordinance is there's enough moving parts with this that I wanted the opportunity, I thought doing it by reso would make it easier to make adaptations from experience and then jump in with the ordinance once we've had a little chance to look at it. Plus, in my grub for points, as I collect a call, I can't get an ordinance done by the deadline, I can do a resolution by the deadline.
There we go.
So what you have here is the model that Sustainable Jersey promulgates and there's a color coding there where basically the items, you know, there's no way we're doing any less than tier two, in my opinion. Like, we're, we're, we're already advanced. there's no way we're doing any less than tier two, in my opinion, like we're, we're, we're already advanced, and we're, and we're thinking, we do have a bike, ped plan, so a lot of this advances the bike, ped plan and basically creates a place for it to have, have to be part of the conversation, that's how I'm looking at it. But basically, the text in orange, but according to the sustainable Jersey point structure, what Peter's tried to do is tell us things that are optional versus things that are manu- mandatory by the different tiers. And my proposal, I think we could probably, and I know Phil was a proponent of, uh, going for green, uh, the green tier here, uh, which is not what they call it, it's sustainable Jersey, but that's Peter's, you know, uh, annotation here, um, and so, this is really something that, you know, I think we can do, uh, because frankly, I'm probably at the crux of these projects and I, I, I feel it's doable, one thing I'll point out, and you'll have a chance to read this on your own, we will have to establish some sort of kind of committee that would meet, um, and my suggestion was going to be, because this is such a cross section, that it would include, um, probably not like, uh, and, and Phil, most importantly, SWAC, STACK, and, uh, maybe sustainable and environmental, and they would each send a representative, and we probably only have to be once at the, at the kind of early planning stages, uh, or, or twice if you have a project pop up, um, and we would use the, the, the policy and the templates to kind of evaluate you know, the project that's at hand, so one of our road projects, for example, whatever very routine, you know, we're going to do between, you know, Denison, between, you know, second to, to fifth or whatever it is, so, there's a lot in here, so I'm not going to attempt to go through it all with you, um, but what I will say is, it is very much a framework for how you're going to make decisions around bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and how you're going to integrate it, and, and the nice thing, this is a very well vetted action, like the roadmap, it's, it's like there's templates and there's even towns that have already adopted these and we can use their checklists, you know, so one of the things we'll have to do is make up a checklist for each project and that would have, you know, as specified in the policy, certain questions we have to answer, doesn't mean that every project, and this kind of goes with the Sustainable Land Use Pledge discussion that we'll have in a minute, has to do everything, but you have to go through the exercise of, well, if not why, and because sometimes it's because you forgot, and that's not a good reason, and so we want to make sure we're picking up the low hanging things that we should be doing, and then if we're not doing them, we're doing it intentionally, not because either we didn't think about it or we're being stingy, you know, maybe we are going to, we just don't have the money and that's the reason. That's okay, or the maintenance on, uh, the, the green infrastructure, we just don't think we can manage it, it's too hard, you know, but at least we've asked the question. So that's all I was going to try to, you have it in your inbox, so you can read it and if you like to read it that way, um, and then, but, but I, I, I will circulate an updated version very shortly with what I think is a reasonable, um, based on the fact, I mean, basically SWAC turned to me and was like, you kind of have to help us decide what's reasonable here, because you know, so much of this is done by the, the borough administration and, and the, and the CME team that is part of that, when, when we're doing these projects.
Uh, just a quick comment, when we were looking at it and going over it with SWAC, just want to point out that the, the green level, um, which would go for twenty four points, I agree with the resolution approach, I originally would have preferred to do it by ordinance, but that was a couple of years ago, when we were talking about one of the older versions of it, uh, to do it, so, so we could incorporate it into redevelopment, along with some other improvements to that. However, if you look at this, uh, just to let you know, the green section basically is only adding, uh, accounting for each project, it's for benchmarking, uh, by, by, uh, theoretical oversight group, which is really just, you know, it's basically the committees we already have, so that the only green addition, uh, to take it up to the next level in the resolution is, is benchmarking by, but, but basically by SWAC, Public Safety, Redevelopment and Public Works, um, they all have an input in that for a particular project, again, it's not everything, but.
And there's going to be stuff that's hard to bench, you know, we, we do know, because we have the bike, ped plan where we have gaps in sidewalks, and so one of the, the measures that they want you to do is, have you filled in that network, you know, and so we have a reasonable approximation, like do I know to like linear foot, like the amount of missing sidewalk, it's certainly when we fill it in, we know how, what percentage are we filling in each year as we go, if we do a special program, what have you, um, so there are going to be, and even SWAC acknowledged, uh, the folks, you know, that there were some metrics that we're just going to do our best, you know, to get that baseline, we're not going to make it a full.
And that's all we have to do.
And, and then we, and then, and then it's like every year, we just have to go do a look back, you know, and how did we do, and then I'll have to report back to all of you, uh, you know, and we'll, we'll just make it part of our routine. That's the hard part, is, you know, changing the routine, and I know that's something you've been talking about for a while now, so I think this gets us a good way forward, but we still have to do it.
This is better than, than, than my back of the nap, napkin overlay of where bike lanes go on, I'm trying to match it up with a road, road reconstruction project.
The bike, ped plan in a place of like, you know, we have to look at.
I just glance at some of the green and I'm like.
I can't tell you how many times I'm like, what should we do, I'm like, wait a second, we have a bike, ped plan, why am I trying to do this from scratch?
Just for further, some further context, I mean, this was, you know, this was on Trish Sanchez's radar when she chaired SWAC, so this has been a long time.
Been a while coming.
So this is, it's great, yeah, this is.
And I really, this, what Peter did, it seems very simple, but that makes my job going through it, like, okay, these are the, if we have no discretion, that's like, okay, move on, uh, but if.
That's why the meetings went on until nine o'clock.
And I think that's why we decided, let's just us sit together and then just try to bang something out, because I think we all were on the same page, so that's this one. And I will circulate one, because I have all the highlights, that's kind of like my final proposal, um, and then, um, we'll hopefully be in a good enough position to move it forward at the July, I do need a little more time myself. On another take one, I, I feel like a school teacher, take one and pass it around. Um, the Sustainable Land Use Pledge, I have an interesting history with this one, I'm sorry, may I, may I move on to the sustainable? The Sustainable Land Use Pledge is, uh, an action that I regret to inform you, I authored when I worked at New Jersey Future, and I. I regret to inform you only because I always found it to be not sufficiently strong enough, you know, uh, when I was kind of in the advocacy role. That said, I was the reviewer for Sustainable Jersey for many years for this action, so what I've done in the version you have here and in your inbox, I've customized the pledge to a little degree, to add some Highland Park flavor, um, I also did ask Erin to review it, because I know the Economic Development Committee wanted, you know, a take on like, will this bite us in the butt in some unanticipated way in a future project, so I'll let Erin speak to that in a second, but essentially the first four whereas's in there are straight out of Sujant Me circa two thousand, whatever that was, and I helped write this and some of these.
Somebody's like, tell me that you helped write this this morning in my meeting.
That's so, that's hilarious, so, um, so Ben, but where I tried to add the flavor, and I think it's kind of important, it helped me think about the pledge a little bit better, and this is what I was kind of trying to address, some of the concerns raised by the committee, which were, you know, we're not going to be able to do all the good things that are in the one, two, three, to seven on the next couple of pages, in every project and every plan and everything. But it's basically, we're pledging that, just like we're doing with the Complete Street Policy, that we care about these things and we are going to do our best to address those things in the projects, you know, moving forward. What I will say is when I was thinking about it, and this actually was prompted by recently going through the cross acceptance exercise for the state plan, you know, almost by default, and I added the kind of last, the three whereas's, uh, to try to address this, is like, we do have a historic land use pattern that is more sustainable, because it's walkable, it's compact, it's near transit, it's near, you know, employment hubs, all those things, so when you, when you look at like smart growth and sustainability from a land use perspective, we're kind of like already doing it almost because that's what we were born to do, and then I would argue in the next whereas, we've been in keeping that tradition going, and if anything, we're trying to double down on it through our master planning efforts, through our redevelopment efforts and so forth, so this is a story I was trying to tell in the reso, so hopefully you see it sing to you, and those are not things you'll see in the template, you know, from Sustainable Jersey, but maybe someone will steal ours one day and we'll see it in fifty towns.
Somebody will, because I'm going to send this to NJ Conference of Mayor, so they were looking for this today.
Insert town, you know, special thing that's.
No, after we, after we, we mark it up and get all our.
It transitions into these different categories, some of which are things you almost have to do anyway, like Phil was saying with, with some of the stuff, regional cooperation within land use, you have to notify your neighbors, but we also are in constant contact with the county, mayor meets with our neighbors regularly, we try to, to the extent that we have projects that might negatively or positively impact New Brunswick, Piscataway, Edison, we do do a job, and we have shared services like animal control and our health and so, so we're, we are knit in, so that's kind of to me a no brainer. Like we do it, we'll continue to do it, and we're always looking for more opportunities, the transportation choices, you know, by virtue of where we are, we are very well situated for transit and assuming we like some version of the Complete Streets, Green Streets Policy, we're already contemplating an action that would advance Complete Streets approach as is suggested in, in this reso. And then natural resource protection, this one's a little more tricky for us in that we are not, like this, remember, this pledge is supposed to be for every kind of town, so we don't necessarily have swaths of environmentally sensitive areas, although we do have
We don't have the.
Ecological, our quarter of that ecological reserve area, which our zoning does protect, um, we do think about, um, we do have a natural resources inventory and we have been talking about getting it updated in the next couple of years, so, you know, while not every project is going to preserve natural resources, um, I think by virtue of developing in a Highland Park kind of context, we're playing our role in the protection of natural resources in the state as I look at it, and we certainly value it and our parks and our open spaces are precious to us, and we, we have concerns about climate. I will say, they glaringly omitted from this is climate change, in part because nobody was using it as a, it wasn't a term of art at the time when I was drafting it, you know, it wasn't in the repertoire, and I guess even though we knew it was a thing, so, you know, that's one thing I contemplated, do I put a, you know, tip of the hat at, but I decided to kind of stay within the parameters of the, of the model. Um, mix of land uses, all of our redevelopment, all of our, our town, i- we just, we're doing it, um, housing options, our affordable housing plans are in kind of our approach. This is a little broader, it's also saying, you know, a commitment to looking more generally at housing, not just kind of deed restricted, affordable, making your numbers work for fourth round, but other kinds of things like, um, could we look at allowing more two families in certain zones, things that we've talked about over the years, you know, this, these would, this would be something that we're willing to have those conversations. Um, and then green design, uh, we were, we're already incorporating green design into our redevelopment plans, and certainly if we were opening up our, um, development, uh, and design standards, we could certainly consider that as well, and there are some Sustainable Jersey actions around green design that we could consider in the future. Um, and then municipal facility citing is kind of a dorky one, in the sense that, like, we're not moving municipal facilities a whole hell of a lot of the time, and if we were to locate them, they're all in good locations because they're one point eight square miles and walkable. Uh, but you can imagine there are some communities with vast sprawling, you know, you know, and they, they, you know, put it over here instead of like, oh, wait, why didn't we put it, so that's one that probably doesn't speak to our community as much as it might to another community with a lot more land to, to play around with. Um, but it's still important to think about it, like maybe there's a better place to put that resource than, you know, let's say we were building the teen center. You know, I think it's well situated right by the community center, by Borough Hall, by some of the neighborhoods that have some more need for, for support, but, you know, we would have that conversation, like, does this serve its purpose where it's located and can people get there easily, um, so that is my, I probably went longer than I, I meant to on that, and I've seen the mayor's yawning, so. But, but, uh, I, 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 I feel very comfortable.
That's because I'm familiar with them.
Already what we're doing, and Aaron, I guess, just, is there any thoughts you have about, you know, concerns, could this be like in a lawsuit one day, like, it's right here, you pledged.
No, it's just that, just a pledge.
But I want to do the things, like, I, I don't, not pledging it just because I, I, I do want the points too, but, you know.
Yeah, I know, I just wanted to, this is awesome, I just wanted to add that, uh, you know, Sustainable Highland Park, uh, you know, has really been, you know, eager to kind of promote these types of practices in redevelopment and, and, you know, heat island effect and air quality are, you know, routine, routine.
Yes.
Consistent, and, and you, and greenhouse gases are addressed.
Are they in there? Well, good, that, that was probably the term of the day.
Right, right.
Two thousand and eleven.
But, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for putting that out, I feel a little better. I was focused on my whereas's, the more recent whereas's, so, any other thoughts on it before, and, and again, you'll have a chance to kind of look at your inbox and.
Okay, Ash. So just to end, just to clarify my question, so pledges are just that, so uh, it's not uncommon for councils to put forward resolutions where they are committing to a concept or an idea, a direction that they would like the administration and the borough to go to, but this is not an ordinance, this is not a binding agreement, you're, and by the way, I pled, you know, the pledge to do these things is not bind you to make every single decision in a certain way, shape or form. These are written in a way where we're saying, this is the general concept of where we want to go, but we're not pushing ourselves into one very specific, we're not pigeonholing ourselves in any way, shape or form, I, I, there's no challenge that someone could make. You know, no one's going to file a prerogative writ and say, you know, three years ago, the council pledged to do something and I don't think this project met that pledge, that's just not a thing.
Uh, and, and this, this actually has been around since I was at New Jersey Future in my early days, and to my knowledge, it's never been challenged, you know, I think we would have had it more of a problem, you know, and that, you know, we would have heard about that if the town got in trouble.
And even as we talked about, some of the other project going to ordinance to resolution, it's sort of the same concept, resolutions are, are, you know, we're, we're going to do things in a certain way, ordinances make things a lot trickier and they're much more emphatic as to how we have to do things, so. I, I like doing things by resolution and, and, and my pledge, I think it, it creates a concept, it tells everyone the direction you want to go, and it gives you flexibility to then look at a project individually and then see how it fits globally and then kind of make adjustments as you go, so you're fine here though from our.
Oh, one last thing I should mention, the, the other kind of, okay, we, assuming there's support and you voted in favor of it, um, at the July first meeting, the, the next step is we send the pledges to our planning board and our zoning board, uh, members and, you know, Matt will be there to try to explain, you know, what, what's going on. But basically, it's just to remind them that, you know, these are our values, again, they're not going to be shocked by these values, they're their values too, that's why they're on those boards. But it's, it's just a way to regroup, I think, we're just lucky in that we, we live this philosophy already, there are towns that don't. And so this is a much bigger lift in a town that has never thought of any of these things, and I can tell you, my biggest, biggest challenge people gave me when I was a reviewer was, I don't want to put the housing, and now they have no choice because the way the world has changed, but they were very petrified mentioning anything about the housing and that was like, you must, so, um, so anyway, thanks for your consideration.
Highland Park Sancho, this is easy, but other towns, for those at home.
You're a hundred percent right, I was at the, um, the planning at Blaustein School this morning and all these towns have new concept, and we talked about this.
That meeting, not that second.
Head of Finkel, who was there, she mentioned you with this, and she was like, we got to dig it up again, and I was like, I'll get on.
Little did you know.
So as soon as we, we, we pass and we move on with this, then we can share with the rest of the state and say, look at what we do, because there were like fifteen towns who said they would love to see something like this.
Really?
So, yeah.
Make sure they cite us in all of their resolutions.
And that's why we wanted to make sure that our pledge was like.
Replace the word Highland Park and Borough.
Yeah, I can, look at us. All right.
And the last sustainable item, Mayor, was, I, I'm not even going to, I'm going to, I promise, this one's short, you may all recall, except for those of you who maybe weren't around back then, we did a survey of all of our board and commission members, there's a diversity category within the Sustainable Jersey Program, and it's a simple tool, uh, but basically we would send out a survey asking for certain demographic information from all, and some of you maybe in, in your roles on boards and commissions completed it, uh, at the time, basically, and then we compare the, that demographic and we're trying to, one of the feedback we got last time was shorten it, so we tried to just limit it to kind of key demographic, uh, you know, gender, age, time, even town, you know, because we want to get a sense for how, how do our boards and commissions represent the community more generally, so we also tried to tie into if it's a census data point, have our categories like for age ranges or for any other thing, income, whatever, match the census category so that we can more easily say, you know, while X percent of Highland Park according to the census is blah, you know, only blahs, a percent is in, in our boards and commissions, so, and, and we recognize some people serve on multiple boards, and then what happens after we do the survey is we'll do a report back out to the council, either at a work session or during one of our regular meetings, that's a requirement of the action, so you'll hear, you know, what our findings were, that's, and we're, we're going to be ready to roll out, it'll be a digital survey, it'll be anonymous, it's not like I'm. we're, we're going to be ready to roll out. It'll be a digital survey. It'll be anonymous. It's not like I'm collecting your name and they're, you know, who you are when we get it. Um, and, um, we're going to ask our board chairs to kind of encourage their members to take it and we're going to distribute it digitally to everybody. But as liaisons to your boards and committees, really encourage them to complete it. If they're, we're gonna, you know, if they don't want to fill, fill one of the questions out, they don't have to, you know? I'm going to try to encourage people to fill as much as they're comfortable with and just try to get to the end of it. And we're trying to make it a little shorter and quicker. So that's an action that we're just refreshing. Uh, you know, it was done long enough ago. It doesn't continue to qualify for points. So, and it's probably interesting. We have a lot of new faces on, on the boards. And so anything you can do, because it was like pulling teeth to try to get people to complete the surveys. Uh, so I'd really appreciate and you, you'll be copied on the distribution that goes out. And you'll, and you know, you'll be able to, you know, nudge them in your, your meetings or what have you. Maybe everybody could just take their phones out for five minutes and do it at one of their meetings, you know? I appreciate anything you can do because again, we're gonna, and I'm just going to say you got, you know, we're giving people like two weeks because it really, if you don't do it, then in two weeks, you're not going to do it. You're going to forget and we'll do one last, you know, we'll do a couple reminders and so forth. So that's just coming and it's more of just a heads up.
I was just, is it like a Google Doc survey? Just to your point.
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't know if you use Survey Monkey or Google. Whatever, one of those tools. Yeah. And, and, and there is a print version, so we can do it that way as somebody for whatever reason, technology or otherwise, we can provide it, but obviously the tabulation will be much easier if people just complete the survey. Um, and if you can just ask for that minute on the agenda once it goes out. So I believe we're trying to get this out next week. So probably you're, you know, in the next couple of weeks and you can do like a final nudge or your July meetings if you have time. And now, did you have a question on it?
Um, no, I just did.
Oh, the next one?
No, 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 no. So, so, um, along the lines of getting the diversity survey taken up, uh, one of the things that we've talked about with Sustainable Jersey is we live that, like their, their values are our values we follow. And so we, we are able to do a lot of, of things because they represent a lot of what we want and things like that. But is there, could we think about it that, at, at some point of saying, by being a silver member of Sustainable Jersey, or if we get to gold or something like that, here are some of the other benefits that we get, right? Like what are, like, can we quantify those to help people? So that people see that we're not just doing it to chase points and, and all that. We're doing it because it helps frame what we do. It helps, you know, gives us a checklist for all of this. But, but somewhere if, if we can help people understand exactly what
Absolutely.
We get grant money.
We absolutely, the, the, there are grants and Sustainable Jersey is very good about trying to reward. Um, either people have done specific actions in the, like for the most kind of sizable answer to that question was we did the community energy plan, uh, a number of years ago. And, and it had like a million things we might look at. They didn't do around the grants available and that's where we applied for those fast chargers.
Right.
Um, and so we got the money. I think it's like $250,000 from the, um, BPU to do the fast chargers, which is not enough money unfortunately, but I'll be back to you on that. Uh, but, um.
Right, Matt's gonna write the check.
Yeah, but the, um, the, the point is if you hadn't done the plan according to the action, you couldn't have gotten in the funding for the implementation. So there are some examples of that. And then some of these are just because it's the best practice and we care about it. And some of them save money in terms of operations, like EV vehicle inventories, tracking that, use, trying to get better about replacing them when they're starting to really, you know, not, you know, are we perfect at that? But at least we're keeping our inventory up to date so that when we kind of can build some more capacity to really have a, a kind of a robust approach for our, our fleet. You know, that saves us money in the operations. So I, I think that's a good challenge. I'm gonna give it to Jake.
All right.
Um, it, it does. And, um, I, I wonder if there's probably some Sustainable Jersey like document out there and why we're so awesome for your town. I can just grab it right out of.
That would be nice. Any other questions?
Yeah, please help me with the survey and they never want to take it. Cause you're always going to come back to it and you don't like that. It's, if you don't do the survey when it lands in your inbox. Um, and, and I should mention, we are convening our board chairs for our kind of, we're getting back onto our annual meeting, just, just the staff and them. And I'm going to make the personal plea at that meeting. Uh, that's going to be the launch and maybe I'll try that my trick, at least get the board chairs to fill it out.
Yeah.
Right, sitting there with me. Um, and, uh, and Jake, so, um, you know, it, because it was just frustrating last time. I just remember I'm really struggling just, just getting a decent participation rate.
Any other questions? Okay, now we move to South Third, which Matt is jumping to talk about.
I am jumping. I, yes, I'm jumping to talk.
I happened to call that day and it was like, we had to meet and I was like, okay.
No, we had, we had, we had a great meeting this morning with Arterio and their staff. And we met the engineers, we met the planners, we met the landscape folks. We, you know, we, we had known them um, beforehand, um, and, and it was really just sort of a, a, a kickoff meeting to get things started. And, and I, I thought it went really, really well. I thought we, um, you know, we, we clarified a couple. They had some questions about where we were in terms of, um, Yellow Brick Road and where we were in terms of right aid and the cut through and, you know, all of those things. So we, we were, um, we've shared some, some good information. So, uh, the, the, the idea is that we're going to continue sort of the, the internal staff meetings. We're going to sort of put some more meat on the, the bones. We have a stakeholder committee, which we've, we've conveyed of, of people from Main Street, people live on the street, um, you know, down the road, we'll, we'll start with, start with our stakeholders. Um, to again, continue to, to flesh some things out. Um, you know, obviously the, the, down the road, we'll have a public meeting, we'll have, um, a listening session. We'll, you know, the public can come in and say boom, 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 and, and all of that. So it was just, it was, it was great to sort of finally get the kickoff. I will say that one of the things that we, um, uh, one of the, the planners, so, so could you give us a timeline? And I said tomorrow. They didn't think that was going to be that fast, but we, they get the point that we are ready and we want to go and get this moving as fast as we possibly can. So, um, so I, it, it, it was a good kickoff meeting. I think we, we got more to do and, um, but it's nice to actually get it going.
And you should definitely report on that near next meeting. And especially that Matt told all the kids last week.
Gotta be a park. Yeah, you got, you set some high expectations.
All those kids went home and tell their parents, yeah, park next year.
Mayor, if I might just add to, just kind of, and it may have been after the point where you had to jump off, Matt. The, uh, the meeting went long. We were all excited. We got, we started like planning the project. Yeah, we couldn't help ourselves. Um, but the, um, kind of just in terms of engagement, kind of think of it this way. We have our advisory committee, which is the small group that's going to kind of, we're going to kind of pitch our outreach strategy to their, you know, kind of, they kind of bless it. And then we're going to have kind of smaller stakeholders, the obvious ones being, uh, you live on, residents on South Third. The businesses immediately kind of adjacent to the plaza are kind of special stakeholders. They're going to have a special concern. Our borough departments like Public Works, like Public Police, like Fire. We're going to bring them in early so that we don't get excited about an alternative that then has a fatal flaw that we hadn't think of. And also not necessarily stakeholders, but advisors to the project are going to be our engineers at CME, especially around stormwater issues and some of those important things. And they're going to be kind of, you know, kind of have our, a second set of eyes on the engineering. And, and L R K will kind of be an advisor to the project. They're not going to be at every meeting. They're not going to be spending a ton of money on it. But it'll, it, I consider them part of our staff and so we're going to roll them in. So we hope to have kind of a proposal put together in really short order about kind of key benchmarks and timeframes. The listening session, you know, we want to do kind of an open house format sooner than later. Because we might also just put it all out on the table, but have some parameters for that conversation. Um, and then get to work designing, you know, that's, you know, get to it as soon as we can. So you'll have a much more, they kind of, I think we gave them some key backing into dates of, you know, important events and things like that. So now there, it's on them to kind of come back to us with a revised proposal. Um, and as soon as, you know, the advisory committee kind of blesses it and that ways in, we'll, we'll share it and make sure all those dates get on your calendar where appropriate.
Any other questions?
When's it gonna get, Bill?
Yeah. Yes.
Just wanted to suggest instead of tomorrow for deadline, we go with yesterday. I'm just curious, like in, in terms of some of the, I, I, I'll get excited. The, in terms of, uh, I think some of the work that needs to happen underground, um, that is maybe just, we know it has to be done. Is that going to commence anytime soon or?
I'm working on the utilities, water and sewer in particular. That's the big ones that go through that area. Uh, middle, middle sex water through our operations contract is coming up with the, uh, specs and an estimate for that work. And then I'll be back to you begging for money. Uh, and the hope would be we would get that out of the way well before construction. I think that's kind of work you can do at different times of the year, especially if you're not looking to perfectly restore the, the roadway, knowing that something else is coming the next year. So absolutely get that done on the front end. Um, I just don't have a price. So I don't know how much to ask for. So that's what I'm waiting on.
And the other, the other sort of infrastructure that we, we talked about is actually the light brand on Rarden.
And that's CME has done the specs for.
Maybe it's done the specs, but that's another sort of infrastructure.
Yeah. So you don't think about it, but the arterial was like, I was like, it's got to be at least like a hundred thousand dollars. And they're like, and really three to $500,000. I'm like, why is everything so expensive? It's just a bunch of lights hanging. Uh, but it is what it is. So there are a lot. And then of course we have the parking lot areas, you know, we need to, you know, so we've got these kind of different sections of the project. And that was what we started talking about was like how we might phase things in construction wise and opening wise. And so that works for Main Street optimally, but it also works for Track C. You know, we got to juggle all these considerations.
Right. I was just going to say that, 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 you know, we, we have a million dollars.
This time my million dollars is already gone.
Probably need another million dollars.
So anybody who's got, you know, we, we need to be on the lookout for those types of things, right? We're going to need to be, be looking out for some additional funds as we, as we move forward. Cause this is not going to be a cheap project.
I was, I'm sorry. The other question I had was related to the funding piece. I'm curious. So it sounds like it's already like looking like it's going to be more expensive than anticipated originally. Uh, but in terms of some of these like infrastructure projects, and I guess just getting up and running with Arterio, have we begun to draw down the state funding that we have?
Arterio is being charged against that.
Correct. Okay. So that's already being spent. Yeah. Good.
So that, that, and keep in mind that, that includes the soft cost, the engineering. You know, it's not just the, you know, the design and the construction. And so, you know, fortunately we've invested a lot already in the permit. So we kind of know what's doing in the intersection and for another 15,000, we could have bid documents for that. That's, that's not too much, but then we, it would be, I would love to have an estimate so that we could really, so the mayor could have that in her hip pocket every time she's hitting people up and she's out and about. And, and we're going to be creative. We can look at, um, you know, other options in our negotiations with our Track C friends and other things. We'll see what we can, we can do. Um, but you know, there's only so much you can squeeze out of one thing, you know? So we're, we're trying to figure that out. But it became very clear, not through Arterio, but even through the interview process with the other consultants that we interviewed, they all thought it was at least one point five to two, some thought even way more, you know?
I would anticipate that this would be more expensive.
Yeah.
Just considering our track and field wasn't going to happen.
Exactly. And that seems very routine and we, we asked for one point eight, by the way, and we got one. So that, you know, we knew as well.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to, just a quick clarification. You mentioned three hundred or $500,000 for hanging lights.
Oh, no, no, sorry. Street and, the street intersection signals, sorry, the light signals. I gotta use the right word. So we have to redo, you know, if you're going to close South Third on that one side, that changes all the lights. And of course DOT makes you upgrade everything while you're there to the latest whiz bang and pedestrian intervals and all that stuff. So part of what that permit was, was the plan for that. And, and we basically told Arterio, we want to work on the other side of that. You know, like keep the, the DOT permit in terms of the street intersection alone and focus on the plaza. We may have to deal with some, you know, ADA curvings and things like that, which DOT will need to review. But, but we, we think we know how the street signals need to work. You don't have to worry about that. And we're giving them those designs so they, they can back right out of it. Um, so yeah, I kind of fumbled the term, but it's the intersection lights, signals, the signals, which who knew that was a thing? You know, I was like, my kids do. Jason?
Yeah. So, uh, to just continue on the questioning, uh, line of questioning was, uh, what I was trying to get after was I'm just curious, like is the, um, money from DCA, the grant that we have from the state budget? Is that like fully in our hands? Is it expended?
No. So there's a million dollars and we haven't charged a dime against it yet. We've been using our own funds to fund the CME work with related to the, because it really predated that money. Um, that money's there. I don't know if we've gotten it advanced. Sometimes you can get it in advance or not. I can't remember with that one. There's a couple of different grants in the hopper and Sage. Um, uh, but that million dollars is eligible for any design and, and construction work. And when we, we awarded to Arterio, th- their chunk is coming right out of that. That leaves up approximately, I want to say $800,000 for the first phase. You know, a nap. I forget exactly what their contract amount, we may have some, um, so, so does that answer your question?
Yeah. Well, because I guess the concern that I had was like, if the money is still with the state, like it could potentially.
No, it's been awarded. We have a grant agreement. I don't think, I mean, I don't know, maybe, I mean, look at what's happening on the federal level. Uh, I, I, I don't, I don't want to speak, but I like to hope our, our state officials would honor the commitment they've made to our.
Right. Just that the potential that, that there could be drastic because of the federal level that, you know, severely like impact.
I believe those funds are encumbered and it's not something that the state can just slice and dice away. That is, I mean, I think we will get going on that, uh, upfront payment. If there is in fact something that we can do, we will do that.
But we should also just at least confirm that it's incumbent, that if the money.
I don't know how they, but then again, I don't know how the federal government was into all these agreements and pull the rug under everybody. So I guess anything can happen if you're willing to throw everything away. But we had a very fancy agreement that we had to execute and people at the high levels of wherever in the state government, you know, these grants. So if you tell me that doesn't mean it's a sure thing, then I don't know what to do.
Not a, I can't speak to you.
Yeah.
Um, but I would just, it might be good to.
Let's do a drawdown.
And see what we can take.
Whatever work.
Usually they'll, they'll let you advance a certain percentage and then hold back. You know, increments, but these are different grants, so I don't know.
Any of the work that we could do on the sidewalks, like to get underground and do that, that work that doesn't involve shutting down the street? Uh, I don't know. It might be good to.
Oh, yeah.
Expedite just.
That's the only money I have to do anything, Jason. So that's the money that we'll spend first, a hundred percent.
But I think Jason's good, that's a good point. Let's get it.
I, I'll see if we can get it.
I'm not sure how that works, you know?
No, you, there are other grants that we have through DCA where the community center roof, for example, was like, oh, you're, you can ask for an advance and it's like 25% of the grant. So we can certainly do that. It's no skin off our nose. It's an easy application. Um, you know, we don't necessarily mean it to keep the project afloat, but given what you said, I think it's.
I, I think it's prudent to follow Jason's need on this because we don't know what's happening. I was speaking to someone, a lawmaker, and they're saying might be September before we get a budget. I was like.
I think they'll pass.
But this would have been last, just to be clear, this was last budget.
I know, but.
But they might reopen it.
Yeah. Yeah. And then that's what they were saying.
Jason, just to be clear, I believe this was last year's budget.
It was.
There's only so much I could do. I make a probably do a drawdown, 200.
I mean, we can take a look. Uh, what, what we're saying is take a look.
Yeah.
And see what the possibilities are. Cause it's crazy.
But we can't do that sidewalk work until we have a better sense of what the rest of the project is, you know?
Oh, sure. I just, like, I mean, because I don't know, you know, the construction.
Cause Jason will die if this doesn't.
Well, that, well, actually the other thing I think we learned more recently is that we're very comfortably below our borrowing threshold. If anyone's a good practice, I, I feel like we have borrowing capacity.
We do, although what you borrow, you must pay back and that raises the.
We want to be careful with that.
And things like that. But absolutely, I think we're going to have to look at all those sources of revenue to make this project, you know, happen. And, um, I think we all knew that eyes wide open. Um, it's just, it's reconfirmed and basically we told them, let's go for a $2 million project, but we don't want to take things off the table that we really want. So, you know, we, we have, we want to have a, I don't want them to say rule out an idea just because, oh, that's going to really throw this off. But they, they asked for a number. So we said, okay, two. You know, it's kind of an outer number that we would want to consider. Um, so.
I think it's worth the investment if it's something down the road that we need to bond for a portion of.
I think the community would agree that it's worth the investment. They really, really want this, so.
Any other questions on this one? All right. Okay. Now we go to number five, NJTP. All right. Okay. Now we go to number five, NJTPAs.
So I had asked to put this on the agenda because I thought we might have an opportunity. We did have it. We do have an opportunity to apply for this program. It's a, it's kind of a technical assistance program run out of NJ, New Jersey, North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, whatever. Um, and the one good thing about going to conferences is you network and I was sitting in the. Um, I had this on the agenda already. I was in the conference at the, uh, planning and redevelopment conference. And I saw like half of the staff of NJTPA, you know, Jeff Proman and. And I'm like, not for nothing, would this be something that you'd considered? And the idea I had was to re-study the one-way. Of Magnolia and Benner in light of the redevelopment and on South Third, and I really loved the idea. And I'd seen something in the. This, the, you know, project description that thought, oh, you had the word complete streets in there. Maybe it would go. And they basically said. No, that they really want townwide things. They want something, it's due at the end of the week, but they did say they have a complete streets technical assistance. That they thought that might be a good candidate for. So now that's on my radar. So I apologize for the false start here, but I wanted to talk about it because. Before we had an ability to do a reso, um, and, but we're not going to apply at this time, save for two year, a lot of time. She already started it. So we have the idea and it's something that came up when we had thought we were getting the funding through, uh, the federal government to do the. The, some portion of North Eighth and the one ways on, on, and I think it's a valid point that we need to. Revisit it, look at the feasibility. And if we don't think that, the configuration that's in our bike plan plan makes sense anymore. What could we do to get the same kind of through traffic for bikes and safe, kind of a dedicated bike space? On kind of parallel line, Warrageon, you know, that, that was the goal with that, that proposal. So alas, on hold. But we will, you will see it again, uh, when, when the, and if I see any other opportunities. But I really liked that it was kind of TA because that's what we really needed. Um, and they have the expertise there. Um, so. So that was easy. No action needed.
I just wanted to mention that at the conference that, um, Terry just talked about, Terry gave a presentation that rocked the house. So I just wondered.
The audience that consisted of Matt, Chris, Ratuja. Navigating a food crisis. I'll have to give my PowerPoint to anybody who wants to listen, but, uh, it was basically.
Mayor wants your PowerPoint.
Okay. I was basically telling them. Um, but basically telling our super fresh and how we tackled it using kind of all the toolbox met, methods we had available to us. And, and it was, I actually really enjoyed it and I, it was actually hell. It was a little like PTSD putting it together, but then, you know. It, it was, it reminded me, it's kind of like, okay, I'm going to apply these to write a, you know, same lessons, different situation, you know? We can, we can do this. And, um, so thank you for the.
It really was a good presentation. Got good comments. People were really, really interested. So thank you.
And I like the other speaker too. So. Title was not a good title. I, I felt like the branding, I did not write it. I was like, you know how you skim the conference thing? It was like harvesting growth. You know, navigating the challenges. It was like, oh, nobody's going to know what this is about by the title. But yeah, everything's a new normal, uh, harvesting. And some people thought it was going to be about warehouses made for growing food, you know?
Can I just add to the chorus of, of, um, patting, patting you on the back and myself on the back is, is, is like, I, you know. Just in, in, in my, in my day job, people ask us from other towns, you know, how, what, what we, the steps that we took in the grocery store. You know, the hands-on approach, I think that how.
Today at the, the conference today, that was another thing that came up. So.
So that's awesome.
And I told him to reach out to you.
All right. No, and I already did talk to the, I think the Chatham mayor.
The North Chatham mayor.
I, I kind of lump a lot of those towns. I don't know them well enough to know which is which, but yeah, happy to share. It's, they're all tools we all have. It's just, doesn't work for your town.
Right, right, right. All right. Any other questions on this? Okay. Now it's time for public comment. Anyone online?
Nobody online.
Okay. So seeing that there's none, I'm going to skip that and going to go right to a tournament. Good night, or I'll see you next Tuesday. This was good. This was very productive.